I would call to order the Rosemount Planning Commission Regular Meeting for Tuesday, May 28th. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda this evening is our annual election of Chair and Vice Chair. So at this time, I will ask, are there nominations from the floor for the position of Chairperson?
I nominate Melissa Kenninger.
Are there any other nominations for Chairperson? Would someone like to make a motion to close the nominations?
It's been moved.
It has been moved by Commissioner Ellis. Is there a second? It has been seconded by Commissioner Rivera. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Nominations have been closed. Would anyone like to, I don't know if, I'm not gonna read it since it's me, that's me, but would anyone like to make a motion to elect Melissa Kenninger by unanimous consent to the position of Chairperson?
I would like to nominate Melissa Kenninger to Chairperson by unanimous consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been motion by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Motion carries. I will continue to serve as your Chair. Thank you for that honor. At this time, are there any nominations for the floor for the position of Vice Chair? I will make a motion of Commissioner Reed for, or I will make a nomination for Commissioner Reed as Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, I will make a motion to close the nominations. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger and seconded by Commissioner Bougai to close the nominations. Everyone in favor, please say aye. Aye. Nay. Nominations have been closed. I will make a motion to elect Michael Reed by unanimous consent to the position of Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Commissioner Reed will serve as our Vice Chair for the next year. Thank you, Commissioner Reed. With that, we will move on to any additions to the agenda. Anthony?
Yeah, Madam Chair, there isn't an addition, but more of a rearrangement at the request of the applicant for Item 6A, Maplewood Development. They're currently attending another meeting and asked that that item be moved a little later in the agenda to allow them time to get to City Hall. So staff is recommending moving Item 6A down just before the zoning code update zoning map.
Thank you. We will, we will honor that, and I'm sure the rest of the applicants in the audience are appreciative of that. Next item on our agenda tonight is audience input. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak tonight for items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, we will move forward to the consent agenda. The consent agenda contains our minutes of the April 23rd, 2024 Regular Meeting. Are there any comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, I will make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye. 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 Opposed? Motion carries. We have no old business, so we will move on to the public hearing section. The first item that we will review on our public hearing section this evening is a variance request by Kevin Mokwin to construct an addition to an existing accessory structure that would exceed the maximum area allowed by the zoning ordinance. And I will turn it over to Anthony.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Slight typo there. The applicant's name is Keith Mokwin. He is the owner of the property located at 4101 143rd Street West here in Rosemount. Let me start the PowerPoint too. As you said, the applicant is requesting a variance in order to construct an addition to an existing 1,000-square-foot detached garage on the property. The maximum amount of square, of accessory structures allowed by the code in the R1 zoning district where the property is located is 1,000 square feet total. The proposed addition would increase the total area to 1,816 square feet, thus requiring a variance to proceed with that project. There are five findings that must be made for all variance requests in order to approve them. Staff is able to make findings of, four findings that are required. Unfortunately, staff is unable to make the finding that there are unique circumstances that would require a variance in order to have reasonable use of the property, and his, staff is unable to recommend approval of the variance request. Here is a site location. It is just west of Shannon Parkway on the north side of 143rd Street West. The property itself was subdivided. The two smaller parcels just east of the site were split off at, at one point there from the original parcel. That was in 2005. The principal structure on the site was built in 1966, presumably when that site was originally platted. Here's a little zoomed in aerial of the subject property. You can see there's a bit of a shared driveway just east of that site with that original, originally subdivided parcel. So there's the principal structure located in the main portion of the kind of south, or central and east side of the parcel. There's the detached garage as well as a carport that was constructed. It's kind of a metal carport structure, not super-permanent in nature, but it is illegally non, or it is not illegally conforming structure, therefore can't be used to account for an increase in square footage to the accessory structures. The code does allow for the continuance of legally non-conforming structures that would allow the applicant to replace that carport with a addition to the garage. Here's a bit of an oblique aerial view. You can see the principal structure located there on the site with the detached garage, a bit unique to the areas that there isn't an attached garage on this house, which would be an option for the applicant to increase the garage space without the need for a variance. The applicant provided some plans for what they are proposing to add on to the detached garage there. You can see it's kind of lighter in color. It's a bit taller, still within the maximum building height for accessory structures in the R1 district. The area overall is the non-conforming, non-conformity that would require a variance. So as I said, there's five findings that must be made in order to prove, improve, to approve a variance request. The first being that it's in harmony with the purposes and intent of the ordinance. Because the footprint of the house is larger than what the proposed detached garage would be with the addition, staff finds that that, that request is in harmony with the purpose and intent of the ordinance. Again, the variance is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The use of the site would remain as a low-density residential, and the applicant is proposing to, to use the property in a reasonable manner, given the information provided by the applicant. Now, that isn't to say if there was another intended use for the addition to the garage, such as a workshop or some sort of commercial purpose, that would not be considered reasonable use. The fourth variance finding is the one that staff is unable to find. There are not any unique circumstances that would, that are, to the property that would necessitate a variance in order for the applicant to have reasonable use of their property. Typically, when we see variance requests, it's due to oddly shaped lots or a parcel that has a wetland on one side of it that required the home to be built kind of pushed up against an edge, and it's not, they're not able to cite a detached garage or an addition just based on the unique circumstances of that given parcel. In this case, there are, are no such circumstances, and the applicant does have reasonable use. And in fact, if they wanted to increase their garage space on-site, they could construct a 1,000 or up to 1,500-square-foot attached garage that would be allowed by code. And then the last finding, that the variance would not alternate the essential character of the locality, a single-family home with a detached garage, whatever the size, would, would still maintain the character as it currently exists. Therefore, staff is unable to make those five findings and cannot recommend approval of the variance request. Staff did receive two comments, one via USPS in the mail from Stephen and Deborah Lee at 14186 Davenport Path. They wrote to say they have no objections to the improvements proposed. Staff also did receive one call. It was not necessarily for or against the variance request, just with concern that with parking occurring on the street where there had not been parking before, they thought maybe the applicant was hoping to use the garage expansion for a business or something like that. The applicant is present. He can speak to that. I would not want to speculate on that. Those were the two comments staff did receive prior to the public hearing. But as I said, staff is recommending the commission does deny the variance request. That being said, if the commission does find that there are unique circumstances to the property that would necessitate the issuance of a variance, the commission would have to articulate that finding for the record. Staff would then update the draft resolution, which would be signed by the Chair. That would be updated to include that finding. That being said, I can take any questions the commission may have. Again, the applicant is present as well, who would probably like to speak on this item.
Thank you, Anthony. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
Anthony, are you able to, this is a good picture, but like zoom out more. I know there was another, like that's too zoomed out, but to where I can see the shared driveway with the other resident to the right of this photo?
This is maybe the best.
Okay, right there. All right, so is there two other houses back there or to the right, or is there just one?
Yeah, there's, there's, there's one house here, and then there's a second one behind it.
Okay, so the two backhouses share that driveway, but the front house has its own driveway off of 143rd?
Correct.
Okay, I'm just trying to visualize it. Thank you.
Anthony, the, I wasn't clear on one thing. The, the non-legally non-conforming structure, is that essentially where they would be placing the new garage?
Correct, correct. So you can see there the brown carport structure.
Yeah.
That would be where the addition would be constructed. So this is the existing detached garage, and this is kind of the general location of that carport.
Got it. And, and that structure was not, did it not go through the city process for approvals and so on, correct?
Correct, correct.
And if they had, would that have been approved?
No. Had they come with a, for a building permit, that would not have been able to be approved based on the size and also the materials. The applicant does say they came in and asked someone at the front counter, you know, if they could do that. You know, we've had some turnover. I don't know who, who they spoke to, but it is, it is, I would say not a huge, like a robust structure in that it's, you know, it's permanent in that it's there, but I think whoever talked to the applicant, and he can certainly speak to what they, what they shared with him, they said it would be fine. Now, staff is not intending to go out and say, you gotta take this down, but when we initially talked to the applicant, we said, well, you've, you've got that carport there. Maybe you could just replace that same square footage of the carport with an addition because you already have that square footage. You're not expanding the non-conformity. But having looked at some aerials and understanding when that was constructed, it wasn't built prior to the city code limiting or, or having that standard. So therefore, while staff may not be out looking to remove it, we certainly can't use it to justify adding an addition because it's not really a legally non-conforming structure.
Understood. Thank you.
So had the, on that same turn, I thought, had the carport been there when the house was built back in, I don't remember what you said, like 1960 something?
Yeah.
At that point, we didn't have these ordinances, but then that would have been a legal, non-conforming structure.
Right.
And then it would have been able to be replaced with this. But since it was built after these ordinances were in place, it can't be, we can't just replace it with this because it's, it's going against the law.
Right, right. Typically, we, we look for ways to accommodate projects and things that people want to do, and a lot of times, if it's a, a legal non-conformity, that's a good way of going around it. And while you're not replacing the carport with another carport, the non-conforming part is the square footage. So you say, okay, well, you have 1,800 square feet of accessory structures on the site. Get rid of that carport, build an addition so that you're not going over what's already legal, even though it's a non-conforming, but in this case, it is not a, a legal non-conformity. So staff was not able to use that.
You had mentioned that there's a, like a option for attached garage that they could add? Would that be in replacement of the detached, or they can do it on top of?
In, in addition, in addition, single-family properties in the R1 zoning district, they can have accessory structures up to 1,000 square feet. They're also allowed a attached garage up to 1,000 square feet, although that can be increased to 1,500 square feet if it's a larger house, so long as the garage part is not bigger than the house part. And the same goes for the accessory, the detached accessory structure. The intent of the ordinance is to ensure that you don't have a property that is garages with a small house. It's, the house is the principal use.
Are there different zones that would allow that type of structure?
The R, the rural residential zoning district allows up to 1,200 square feet, so 30 by 40, so not, still, still below what the applicant would be requesting here. And then further out in the Egg District, east of Akron Avenue, you can have up to 2,400 square feet for accessory structures that aren't egg use.
Got it.
Anthony, you mentioned that the attached garage would be an option, and is there room, like, on the back of the house for that then, or the side, or?
I mean, it's certainly a sizable lot. That's not really a debate. I think that, you know, there's room to build an attached garage. I don't, you know, you start one project, it might become a lot bigger project depending on how the house is arranged inside. But certainly, there's room on the site. They wouldn't have any issues with lot coverage or setbacks for that.
Are you requesting that they take down the carport at this point then?
No, no.
Okay.
Typically, when, when something like that happens, where staff does have to enforce on a, on a illegal, non-conforming structure, it's based on complaints. Someone building a shed too close to their neighbor's, or too close to the property line. So, you know, unless we hear something, we're not really going out.
And the neighbor that has no issues with it, is that the one that's further back or the front neighbor? I can't tell which.
That would be fur, it'd be north, so it would be on Davenport, so backing up to the property.
Oh, okay. So not necessarily the neighbor that shares the driveway?
Right, right.
What's the square footage difference between the existing carport and this proposed addition? Do you have those?
The existing carport is about 700 feet. I can't remember off the top of my head. It's about, so the existing actual garage is 1,000, and then the request would be to go up to 1,816, so it's about 800 square feet.
Okay.
Are there any other questions at this time for staff?
Anthony, before we open the public hearing, I'll just ask one more question. All of our variances, just, just a refresher for us, all of our variances, all five findings had to be found, and if we do something here, we have to, there has to be a finding for that fifth finding.
Right.
That is, that's unique to this property, and we're not opening ourselves up for allowing every home to come in and get a variance against this. Like, it's got to be something that's unique to this situation.
Right, yes. That, that's basically it. We do receive requests frequently from property owners looking to expand detached structures, build new detached structures, not only in the R1 district, but even more so in the rural residential district, the larger lots, because they tend to have more room. Again, the intent of the ordinance is to ensure that the principal structure is the house and not a garage. There, I guess there's an argument that could be made. It doesn't really support the findings, but the impact of a larger garage due to the fact it's a larger lot is pretty low, but again, staff isn't able to make that finding to make this a, a situation in which a variance should be issued. Or, or even must be issued.
And I just, I'm just gonna use some slightly different words, but I mean, the, the danger here, risk here, is that we, we're setting a legal precedent, right? If, unless there's really a finding here to meet that fifth condition, we're setting a precedent that legally we may need to follow in other cases, right?
Yeah, I think, you know, there's lots of varying sizes throughout the city and lots that could accommodate a larger detached garage than other lots, and you could be getting requests for variances from a number of those property owners that want to add on to, you know, build a new detached garage. I certainly could use more storage at my house, but, so I understand the, I understand the desire and the draw to that, for sure.
Chair Kenninger, Commissioner Reed. Precedent may be one word, but another way to look at it too is that it could be found that the decision was then made arbitrarily versus based on a finding of fact, which is what Anthony's outlining within the, the presentation, that those five findings need to be met to issue a variance. Again, turning it back to the commission after the public hearing is held, if the commission find, makes a fifth finding that meets the criteria of our ordinance, that is certainly something within the purview of the Planning Commission, but we're just trying to really stress that if that's the decision or the way that the commission would like to go, that there needs to be a fifth finding issued based on facts on, on the site and not be deemed arbitrary.
And to clarify, it doesn't necessarily matter that the intent aligns with the ordinance itself, right? Like, if there, if there, the ordinance is in place to say, we really don't want it to become like a commercial operation out of somebody's garage, and it, and it's still in line with that, and the intent's there, that doesn't matter. What matters is we're following these five.
Correct. We have the, the code, and then we have those findings just to make sure, as Community Development Director Keenberger said, so that when we, when we make decisions and when the commission makes decisions, that you can say this is exactly why.
Yeah.
Because the next time someone comes through with a similar request, if you don't approve it, or if you, you know, you're able to approve something that the findings aren't there, you know, that opens the city up to, to, you know, litigation and things like that as well, for the arbitrary nature of the decision-making.
Thank you. Any other questions for Anthony? Okay, thank you, Anthony. At this time, we will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone in the audience who would like to speak may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. I'll invite the applicant to start us off.
Good evening, everybody. I am Keith Mokwin. I am the property owner at 4101 143rd Street West here in Rosemount. I think the, the basis of what he's talking about, those four factors, and obviously, I'm not going to run through all five because we're kind of getting stuck on that number four, that uniqueness of the property. If, if you understand Rosemount and you know Rosemount's history, you'll know that this property is very unique. It is in, built in 66. It is the original homestead to Hawkins Pond. It carries their namesake as that's where the Hawkins built the home. So the uniqueness of the property, the big thing, one of the big things is, is saying that I have the ability to put on an attached garage. That ability does not exist. It, it's hard to tell the, the topography of this photo, but down at the south end of the house, which, which is the front of our house, that is a hill. That is a fairly steep hill with the tall spruce trees at the street. To the right of the property is obviously going into the, the neighbors where the, the shared driveway goes up. To the left, obviously, is where the driveway wraps around, and within 10 feet to the left of that driveway, there's a significant slope going down to my neighbor to the west. We are up on a hill. We overlook all the properties to the south of us that are on the lake. Looking at our property in the rear, there is nowhere to put an attached garage. That's our main entry. Our main entry is in the rear. To, to put on an attached garage, we would have no backyard, no, no space there at all. And if you know our community, you know this house is not one that they, they don't want us to change the aesthetics of the front of this property. And that is all that you see coming down 143rd Street. You see the big spruce trees. You see the big house on the hill. We're not looking to make those changes that nobody in our community wants. The garage that's located in the back, you cannot see from the street. It doesn't matter what the season is with the tall spruce trees, with the hill. There's no visual spot that you can see the garage. Even with the raised height of, of what's proposed, we stood back, and because it's on such a hill, you still can't see it. The other uniqueness, I, I took the time to drive north, heading more towards McAndrews, to, to those properties that are closer in size to our property. Our property is unique. There are no other properties like ours around us. All of the properties around us are that unless they're sitting on a large lot going to the lake, their, their building portion is that half acre to three or quarter acre. That over an acre doesn't really exist around us. So I had to venture out north more McAndrews and that kind of spider web of, of roads off of McAndrews to find homes, and what I found was the homes that appeared to have an acre or more, the, the common denominator there was they had the big attached garage and the big secondary building. So his, that fourth one saying reasonable use, on a property of that scale, reasonable uses, they, they typically have a lot more storage, a lot more garage space plus detached garage space. We can only have one space, and that is the detached. As far as the commercial use, we're not, we're not doing anything like that. I know that, that seemed to be in question. We do have a small collector car collection. I also have five kids that are all of driving age. The only, we, we typically do not ever park at, at the street. That view is pretty obstructed from where we are with the big spruce trees, so it's kind of a security issue. We really don't park at the street. If, if we have somebody parking at the street, it's usually because up, up at top, it is not the easiest to turn around to maneuver, to get people turned around to go back down, and it's kind of a scary thing watching people try to back down that driveway. As far as the neighbor that mentioned something from, that lives on the north side of the property, that, that's through the trees, and I have some photos. I don't know how to, to let you see those photos, but when you're standing at the back of the property... you see those photos, but when you're standing at the back of the property, like, if I were standing where the rear of the carport that exists is, or the back of the garage, during the months of, of foliage, you can't see those properties. It is completely filled in, and if, if we were allowed to do this building, that's really not gonna change. We're, we're not removing any trees. I have pictures showing the space behind the carport, and it's just kind of a dead weeds space. There's really nothing there. And even in the winter months, that, that view from the neighbors to the north, between their sheds in the back property and the full trees, that, that is still a very heavily obstructed view, and I would say their view with us putting up a garage would actually probably be better than the current view that they have. So, I, I don't think the aesthetics of either from the neighbors that are sitting down lower, or for anybody at the street really would be a question. It seems to be the question of uniqueness of property, and can you find something unique about it? And, like I said, the, the uniqueness is, we, we can't have a detached garage, and I can't find another house on a property this size that is in that same boat as me. And I would say if somebody else came forward with that same property and the same issues, they should probably be heard just as well with the same, the same uniqueness. That's, I guess, all I have to say, unless-
Thank you. If you wanted to pa, you're welcome to pass the pictures. If you, if you brought them and want to share them, you certainly can do that. We can pass them I believe Anthony, just to clarify, the neighbor behind was not opposed to this?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
But most of them are, you know, like, standing at the back of the property, either showing where that building would exist. There's looking, you know, front of the carport, and then looking north, I kinda took a shot in the trees, just so you could see that. You can't see the homes behind us, that there's, there really is a visual break there.
Okay. Now, in, in considering the options here, I did drive by, but, but I'm not a building expert, so I, I don't know to the extent to which the, the slant of the hill there would prevent something from being built. Is it, did you have somebody take a look at the possibility of doing the addition, and do they, they tell you, "We cannot do it because of the, the slants there," or?
Um, it, it's, if, has anybody, you've, you've driven by the property and you've seen the hill?
Yes.
Are you talking on the south side, at the front of the house?
Well, the, the addition-
On the, on the west side of the house, I believe, right?
On the west side of the house, yes.
So essentially, could you put something on the ma, on the thing that's up there, there between, say, where the, where the driveway is currently and the house, you know, in lieu of those trees there? You know, could, could you put something there-
There would no longer be room for the driveway.
Okay.
And there's, there, there is still a slope there. Between the driveway and the house, there's a pretty significant, like, you're walking up a boulder path to get up to that, that far left structure, the west side structure of the house. Like, there, there is still a slope. I mean, you can't take a riding lawnmower on that kinda slope there.
Okay.
I have a couple of ques, excuse me, a couple of questions. What is, what is the materials of your driveway made of at this time?
Blacktop.
It's blacktop?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And then, how long, what, did you buy the home and that, I guess, makeshift pole barn thing, shed was there already?
No, it was not. We-
How long ago was that put in?
2018.
2018?
Mm-hmm.
And then what is your lot size of your-
Uh, it's the entire lot?
Yeah.
It's just over an acre.
Okay.
It's one, I think he has it listed as 1.01.
Correct, 1.01.
Okay.
Yep. The, the other thing in question was, I'm not quite sure where he came up with the numbers that he spoke to, 'cause when, when we took, we took the outside measurement of the existing garage, which is 32.33 feet by 24.33 feet, which is, is a total of 786.8 square feet. That's the existing garage, not the 1,000 square feet. And then, the plans for what would be the addition of the garage are 22 by 36, which is 792 square feet, not the 816 that he noted. So, there's a little discrepancy that he has there in numbers.
But a thousand feet, 1,000 square feet is the limit anyways, right? So, it's, we're-
Right, so, so we're on there.
It's a matter of degree of being over and not, right?
Yep, we would still be over, but I'm, I'm saying the, the, the combined square footage, if we did the addition along with what's already existing, that, that combined number-
1,578.
Is 1,578. You know, so it's, it's only an addition of 578.6 square feet, not the 786 square feet that he had mentioned. So, it is, I mean, if you would wanna approve that much, great, but we're, that's not how much we're looking to add. It's, it's significantly less than what he had mentioned.
Thank you.
Just, I have a, kind of a follow-up on that, you know, where we could put things. The slope of the land and things wouldn't prevent you from putting something, attaching it, say, to the north and east part of the house, but the, the layout of the house makes it, so that's not feasible, right? So, if we were to put it on the, on the east-hand side, they're kind of-
Like, kinda where the property of where the yellow line is going to the property?
Or, and to the, to the north of the house, you know, if the, if the detached, if the attached garage was there in that-
Just right at the entrance.
Make an L shape.
Exactly, to make an L shape.
Um-
So that you could-
We, we would lose egress on two entire bedrooms. There also might be setback issues there, but we would definitely lose, and with five kids, I guess I really don't wanna lose egress to two entire bedrooms.
What about the north side, left of the entrance? Seems like you could put the entire existing structure right there.
On the, like, kinda the northwest-
Northwest side?
Corner?
Yeah, the northwest corner, it's supposed to northeast corner, yeah, yeah.
Um, I don't know how I'd be able to turn into that garage. Like I said, it, the slope, the slope continues all the way up until you get to where that driveway really opens up at the top. I know, 'cause we've been stuck in our driveway many times. If they would, we would be, ask, really, that it's-
I wonder if you, if you would drive all the way to the north of it and come in, and then drive south into the garage? You know, so you would, it almost would have but to that driveway that's there. But I don't know the topography back there.
But I, you would have to relocate the, the existing driveway to the east as well to get around it to the existing garage? If you're putting a 1,000 square feet garage there, which is then removing a lot of windows, including would be the window that's in the kitchen, I, the, the ability is there. I don't think anybody would want a house with the garage being there and having no view, no interior light going into the kitchen dining area. There's also that, that little jut out part on the north end of the house. It's a four-season porch. You're really kinda taking out a big, a big chunk of the view out of the, the north side of that house by lopping a garage in there.
Aesthetics, though, is not a really a good valid reason for variance, right? I mean, it's-
I'm sorry.
I don't think aesthetics is the reason we would do a variance. It really, it really needs to be something unique about the property itself that, that would, and what I'm thinking, I'm cur, very curious on the west side there, we started talking about, because, I mean, if, if, if the property will not allow, based on the slope-
Slope.
Will not allow, cannot build, an attached garage on the west side of the house there, that seems like it would be a unique circumstance. We could, if you can't build, build the garage there and still have a driveway that goes to the back, that seems like it would be a unique situation, but I don't see, I'm not hearing anything else that would be. I'm not sure what other, the other commissioners are seeing or hearing, but-
I'm also thinking, excuse me, the same thing. Like, I don't expect someone to just entirely gut their house to build a garage, and that's not, I don't think what we're asking him, and I wouldn't ask that person, but we're also asking them, like, to relocate your entire driveway, to accommodate for an add-on, and then, I can't see a slope from this picture, so I'm trying to visualize if it is on a hill, that would be a unique circumstance if it's on a hill. Then we're asking them to dig out an entire hill to build a garage. So, I, at this point, I, I'm leaning towards the unique circumstance. I just need to see a slope, 'cause I can't see it from this view.
Can I have a, can I ask a question of staff? Did, were you all able to, or did you all consider the slope to the lot, slope of the lot, when you were looking at whether the lot was, whether there was unique circumstances, or were you guys, did not, or did that not focus, did you not focus your inquiry on that part?
So, the request is to add on, an addition to a detached garage. That was the first thing.
Yeah.
You know, without going inside the house and knowing how it's laid out, it certainly seemed to staff that there would be an opportunity to add an attached garage somewhere along the north side and, and make sort of a motor court out of that driveway, I guess you could say. Make an L shape out of the house. But when we, when we review variance requests, it's really through the lens of those five findings.
Okay.
And it's a, does, is there a need for a variance to make reasonable use of the property, or is it, do they want a variance so that they can do everything they want with the property? Because there are site constraints in, in every property in the city, and, you know, the folks to the north off of McAndrews, those are minimum lot sizes of two and a half acres with a five, one unit per five acre density. So, those are di, those are different lots, and this is a larger lot, but there are one acre lots in other R1 districts as well. We certainly wouldn't recommend them bringing a variance request to the commission, simply because they have a large, if you can fit it, why not? Why can't you do it? That's not really how the code works. So, I guess, going back to your question, you know, we kinda looked at it, and it, it's a big enough lot, and, and you kind of can do anything, you know, if you spend enough money, which I don't think anyone wants to, and, again, not going, knowing how the house is laid out inside, what that would, would mean, but really looking at, this isn't a request to add on to a detached garage. That's, you know, the applicant already is kind of at, over their maximum for, for accessory structures. Also note that there is a yard shed on the west side of the property that counts towards that square footage. I think that's kind of some, where some of the square footage was added. Same with the, the addition on the back of the, the existing garage. But, but when we, when we talk to residents and they ask, you know, people ask for variances, they just, it's kind of like the word grandfather. They just, it's something that's in common usage, but the variance process is not just so that you can have what you want or everything you want. There are site constraints that limit certain things, and, you know, if there's sloping and stuff, and, and, you know, the people that built the house, you know, they didn't think of having an attached garage at the time. I mean, that's, that's where it's at. That's, that's the state-
I can speak to that, actually.
But that's all I wanted to get to, was the fact that the variance isn't for what you want. It's, do you need a variance? Because there's things about the site that, that without the variance, you wouldn't be able to use the site as intended.
So, he, he mentioned about when, when the home was built. If, if you go back and you look at the original pictures, when the house was built in 66, there was a small attached garage at the front of the house, but when they did the big land divide and they, they, it was Kathy Trimble, if you know who that builder is, and she added the homes to the east side, they changed the topography and they moved the driveway, and that garage was taken out, and they changed the front of that house. You have to go back a lot of years to see when there, there was a little garage there. But now, the way that everything is sloped and the way the driveway runs now, and they ran gas lines and everything down there, that, that's, 'cause we thought about that, and it's off the table for us. It, it's, they can't be done. He kinda, he kinda went away from what, what our main focus was of, is there a uniqueness to the property? And I think, I think to say that the property doesn't have that uniqueness that you need to find, I think that's a hard sell. I, I think the property is very unique. It's, it's a landmark property to Rosemount. We're not looking to change the main structure of the home. We don't feel it should be changed. We've had hundreds of people show up at our house because it is that old house, just wanting to see it. That, that house has a history in Rosemount, if you know Rosemount's history. We were very lucky to get that house. We went round and round, knowing that if we could get an attached garage, that would be the way to go, but there really, there really isn't. And when you go up to the homes on McAndrews or anywhere, you know, find a home on a big lot that doesn't have the attached garage as well as, as the detached, they're just not out there.
Can I ask a question of staff? Again, as I'm looking at item number four, it's, it's not just a unique circumstance of the lot, but it's a unique circumstance that the, that the applicant wouldn't have reasonable use of the property, right? And so, we're, we're trying to decide if this is an additional reasonable use, or if this would be an addition to reasonable use of the property as well, too. It's not just that the parcel is unique, or the property is unique, but that it's unique enough that it's limiting a reasonable use of it, okay?
Right.
Okay.
And, Madam Chair and Commissioner Bugai, you know, maybe to, to clarify the, the process of making those five findings, and I know we're, we're focused on number, number four, 'cause that's really the one, the uniqueness of the property that seems to be in question, and it's not solely focusing on, is a property unique based on any number of characteristics unrelated to the request? I mean, that, the, the request isn't to approve a site plan showing an attached garage. That was just more of a logical next step or an assumption that if, if there isn't the ability within the code to expand the existing detached, maybe there's an option onsite to include an attached garage, and we're hearing that that's probably not reasonable or practical based on the house and the configuration and everything else. But probably to draw you back to the condition or requirement for a variance approval isn't to necessarily solve for something that's not being requested as a part of that either.
Thank you. Anything else that you wanna add?
Um, I guess just the, you know, if your train of thought is on reasonable use, where I look at homes with, with lots that are a substantial sized lot, you know, most of those homes have, like I said, the, the reasonable use, the reason why they get homes with that, that size lot, a lot of times, it's for the additional space, and that's, that's really what our request is for, is we have a lot of stuff. We have a hobby. This, this is by no means going for any commercial use. It is really just for our own private use of storage of vehicles that, that we've obtained.
What I'm hearing, though, is that, like, it doesn't matter the lot size, it, the restrictions, 1,000 feet regardless of lot size for R1, is that correct?
Right, that is correct.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you all.
Thank you.
Appreciate your time.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item at this time?
Hi, my name is Sarah Parrish, and I'm at 14096 Dearborn Path, so I am the structure, the house directly behind their house, and my husband and I would have no problem with this structure being built. I came today to make sure that there weren't gonna be lost or- Um, I came today to make sure that there weren't going to be lost of, lost trees, or it wasn't going to be used for commercial purposes. Um, and, um, from what I'm hearing, it's not, so, we would have no problem with it. Um, it would probably actually look better in the winter than, than what is currently there, but, um, not that that's bad by any means, but, um, so, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know that we would have no problem, so, and we're directly behind, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to speak on this item this evening?
Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries, the public hearing is now closed. Um, so now, we have this, this item before us to make a decision on. As staff has advised, um, to move forward, we do need to, we do need to have a strong finding for, for number four. Um, and as Commissioner Bugai pointed out, it is a reasonable use of the property, so we've got to, we've got to balance that. Um, so, does anyone want to speak on where they're at this evening, or, um, or make a motion?
I don't believe that the, that there's unreasonable use of the property, and I'm not sure that adding this additional structure, uh, provides more, uh, that there's a need for more, you know, for a variance off of, uh, off of the existing structure that's there for an addition.
Yeah, I'd, I'd agree. I think with that clarification, um, there is reasonable use of the property. They've already, as a matter of fact, they've kind of gone overboard a little bit with the temporary structure and back. Um, I don't think rejecting this causes any, um, any unreasonable use of the property.
On one end, I can, I can understand where you're coming from, in that, like, you know, you've articulated well that, you know, it's what your intent is, and it aligns with the intent of, of the use of the property. But I feel like, at the same time, our hands are a bit tied in that, uh, you know, the restrictions are the restrictions, a thousand feet. And then, these five findings have to be true for us to, in a sense, move forward on the variance. And so, um, while I kind of understand your position, I don't necessarily feel like I have the ability to overrule anything from what's being recommended, uh, based on what I'm hearing today.
I'm on the, kind of, that same length, too. Your neighbor doesn't have an issue with it, you already have an existing makeshift shed, garage thing. Um, and it would look nicer, apparently, to your neighbor as well. Um, but our, we, our hands are tied when it comes to the actual variance and the, and what we're allowed to do as a planning commission based on that. Um, so I, unfortunately, I, I won't be able to allow this. It sounds like you're able to add on to your home, if that's something down the road that you choose to do, um, that would be acceptable for that type of structure.
I, I also, I do feel, um, similarly, that the carport, the temporary carport that's there, this would certainly look better. Um, but I also believe that, that we don't have enough to claim that it's an, that the property creates an unreasonable use. If the property didn't have a garage at all, because of the slope, there could, like, I, then, obviously, if it was setbacks or anything like that, you, I think you could get into something where that's not reasonable use. But there's, I feel like there is, the property is able to be used for, and made reasonable. Um, the variant, or the code does allow, the ordinances do allow for an attached garage. I know it's not ideal, I know it's very difficult, um, but that, that's kind of the way around, around it is, because the code does allow that, but it, it doesn't allow for it to be a larger than a thousand square feet for a detached, unfortunately. Anything?
I don't have any other comments, so I think you guys have summarized my feelings pretty, pretty well.
And I think if enough of this comes up, I mean, certainly, it can be reviewed from an ordinance perspective on whether the code as written is sufficient or not, and if they want to update it down the road to allow for these kind of things, then, you know, our hands become untied at that point.
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion to adopt a resolution denying a variance from the R1 low-density residential standards to increase the maximum aggregate total for any accessory building excluding an attached garage from one thousand square feet to one thousand eight hundred and six square feet.
Second.
Eight, one thousand eight hundred and sixteen, excuse me. It has been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. This item is heard by the Planning Commission, acting as the Board of Appeals and Adjustments. It does not go forward to City Council. Um, our decision here this evening is, is final on this item. There is a ten-day, um, appeals process, and if anyone wishes to appeal our decision this evening, they may do so by reaching out to City Staff. We'll move on to our next item on the public hearing this evening. Public hearing agenda this evening, it is a request by 814 Services LLC for a site plan review to develop a childcare center. And we'll turn it over to Julia.
All right. All right, so a little bit of a summary of the request. So, 814 Services LLC is requesting approval of a site plan for a new childcare facility on a 1.44 acre site north of 145th Street West, County Road 42, and then west of Akron Avenue, and then also east of Abbeyfield Avenue. It's kind of right in the middle between those two main roads. Um, so, childcare centers are permitted use within the C4 General Commercial Zoning District, which is where this property is located in. And then, staff finds the site plan to be consistent with the requirements of the zoning ordinance, subject to the conditions listed in the recommended action. Uh, so, a little bit of an overview of the site locations. You can see it's going to be outlined in red. It's, it is in between, like I had mentioned earlier, Akron Avenue and Abbeyfield Avenue, and then directly north of County Road 42. Um, it is, um, directly east of that First State Bank of Rosemount site that was just in, um, front of the Planning Commission. Um, and then also is part of Preswick Place 25th Edition, which was just recently approved by the Planning Commission and City Council as well. Little overview of the zoning, so you can see that it is zoned, that C4 General Commercial PUD, um, and is, um, located south of that new Roars Apartment Building, and then also east of Lifetime Fitness. And then, like I had mentioned, it's, um, east of the First State Bank of Rosemount that was recently approved. So, a little bit of overview of the site plan. So, like I had mentioned, it is 1.44 acres in size. The site will contain eleven thousand nine hundred, um, eleven thousand ninety-three square foot childcare center with a ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-six square foot outdoor play area, which you can see is located south of the building and is enclosed with a fence. Uh, the building is shown to be located in the southeastern end of the site. Um, and the northern and western portions do contain the parking area and as well as drive aisles. Um, so you can see access to the site is off that internal road that goes east to west between Akron Avenue and Abbeyfield Avenue. And then, also, there are internal accesses as well. Um, there will be connection roads between First State Bank of Rosemount to the west, and then also a connection road to the north, which will, um, connect to the commercial development to the east, which, um, we do anticipate an application coming forward soon for that commercial development as well. And then, here's kind of an overlay of, um, the site to the west, which is that First State Bank of Rosemount. Um, kind of, you can kind of see the connection roads in there, in here, showing how that will work out. So, there will be another commercial site directly west of, um, of this childcare facility that does not have a user as of yet, but there will be two commercial sites to the west, which is part of that Preswick Place 26th Edition that the Planning Commission did see. So, there will be three, uh, commercial sites on this site of, um, of this site. So, a little overview of the parking. So, the parking requirement for a childcare center is one parking stall per twenty children, and then plus one parking stall per staff member. Uh, based on the number of children, uh, the facility will be able to accommodate, which is about a hundred and fifty-seven students and twenty-six staff members. A total of thirty-four parking stalls is required, and they are proposing forty stalls on their site plan, so they do exceed that minimum requirement. Then overview of the landscape plan. So, the city's landscape ordinance does require that properties within commercial zoning district plant a minimum of eight trees or one per three thousand square feet of land area, uh, based on the site area, which is roughly about sixty-two thousand seven hundred and twenty-six square feet. A total of twenty-one trees would be required to be planted on site. Currently, the applicant's site plan does show a total of eleven trees planted throughout the site. Um, so, it does not meet that minimum requirement. Uh, the landscape plan does show to meet the requirement for foundation plantings, which is fifty foundation plantings, and then also a parking lot landscaping. So, here's kind of an overview of that breakdown, um, of what is required. Um, overall, the landscape plan does not, uh, meet the requirement, so that is a condition of approval to provide additional trees on the landscaping plan, uh, prior to, uh, building permit issuance. A little overview of the, um, utility plans. So, detailed grading, erosion control, and stormwater management plans were submitted, uh, to the city for, um, for review, which our city engineer and cities consultants did review. Um, some key takeaways from that were that the applicant does need to provide, um, tardy movements for emergency delivery and garbage vehicles, uh, and then working with the landowner to the west, which is that, uh, Preswick Place 26th Edition over there, to coordinate the shared access off of that internal east-west road that you see on the northern portion of the site. Um, and then also to coordinate, uh, utility installations and extensions with that commercial area as well. And then, site lighting. So, the applicant, um, is proposing site lighting that is consistent, uh, three pole, uh, mounted lights within the parking area, and they are, um, showing them to be twenty feet, twenty-five feet in height. Um, so, the maximum level of lighting allowed by code is zero point five lumen at residential property lines, and then one at, uh, non-residential property lines. And so, that northern one does abut up to that high-density residential, uh, property to the north, where's that, um, where that residential apartment building is. So, um, the applicant will be resubmitting an expanded photometric plan, showing that, that does not, um, exceed that maximum requirement at the northern boundary line. Then a little overview of the, um, architectural elevations. So, you can see from this, uh, visual that brick will extend along the base of the entire building, and then horizontal lap siding makes up the remainder of the exterior, um, siding. The C4 zoning district does require that at least fifty percent of the exterior must contain natural stone or brick, which currently, this, um, architectural elevation does not. The applicant is aware of that, and, um, staff is recommending that a condition of approval calls, uh, for a resubmit of an updated elevation that does meet that fifty percent requirement. And then, a little overview of the floor plan. So, the building is one-story, and it is under that thirty-five feet maximum height requirement as well. And then, a recommendation, so a motion to approve a site plan review allowing 814 Services LLC to construct a childcare center, subject to conditions one through seven. I did want to note that condition five, um, there was a typo at the ending, so it should read applicant will need to verify that lumens on the photometric plan do not exceed zero point five at residential property lines prior to, um, issuance of a building permit. It should not say prior to City Council approval, as this is only in front of the Planning Commission, so. With that, I can take any questions that the commission may have. Um, the applicant is here as well, um, if you do have questions for him.
Julia, just real quick on this last, this condition change.
Yep.
Are you saying this doesn't go to City Council?
No, it says site plan review.
Okay, it's got a City Council meeting date on it, so.
Yeah, that was.
Okay.
That should not be there.
Thank you.
Julia, can you go back to that view that is the three lots next to each other? And I really appreciate this, is exactly what I wanted to see, what I was looking for.
Yep.
Um, so, okay, so, the entrance, uh, primary entrance would be on the north side here from that, from that road. Um, and then, the lot line there, basically, just shows that there's going to be a shared, that driveway will be shared, basically, half with this and half with the new, okay.
Yep.
Um, and where was the, where was the turning radius issue?
Um, if you can kind of see down there, there is a, um, a median. You can kind of see where this cursor is. There were potential concerns with the southern portion of that median, um, just for turning in and out. Um, I do believe that there has been changes with that site plan that the applicant can speak on. Um, but that was, um, a concern just with fire access and such like that.
What is the purpose of the median? I'm not sure I.
Separation, I'm guessing. Again, I don't want to speak for the applicant, but, um, you know, like you see, that there is a shared access, so from what I interpreted, it was more of a separation between the childcare facility and then the commercial development to the west.
Is that, we see that on other plans? I, and that doesn't sound like.
Um, not recently. I don't believe there is a median between the First State Bank of Rosemount to the west, and then the potential commercial to the east, but again, that, that commercial development hasn't come forward yet, so.
Commissioner Reed, I would let the applicant speak to that, but I do know that they had some plans for angled parking, and also to better control traffic, given the fact that there'd be multiple uses using that same entrance. Um, but I, and they can speak to it, but it was sort of been resolved so that, that curbed median is, is no longer necessary. So, I think their updated plans have that.
Removed it, okay, thank you.
Do we have any restrictions on the children's play area backing up on the county road? There's nothing in, so that, that, as I was looking at, that was the thing that struck me, was that we had kids playing, and I don't read plans well enough to know, obviously, it doesn't, they're not playing on the shoulder of the highway. There's a ditch there and whatever else, and there's the fencing. But that was my only question, is whether there was any sort of restrictions on that kind of thing in our city code.
Um, Commissioner Ellis, no, there aren't any code restrictions on that. And we've seen that, uh, question also come up on other daycares that have been proposed in fairly recent history. Um, of course, we'll defer to the applicant to talk about how their, their facility operates, and, um, safety parameters and fencing and that type of stuff. But, um, typically, if you would look at other childcare centers around town, anywhere where it does abut a roadway, they have, um, some type of approved or robust fencing that, that meet their criteria and are within city's criteria as well. But, direct answer to the question, no, there isn't anything specific.
Okay.
Julia, on that question, can you tell us how far that, there's obviously a setback from the property line to that play area, and then there's obviously some, some additional right-of-way for the road, right?
Yeah, I, for, the building itself is roughly about sixty-seven feet back from County Road 42. Um, that play area, I would, I can't say directly, but I'd say it's over thirty feet.
Thirty feet from the property line or from the road?
From the property line.
From the property line, and then there's still another.
Yep, all of this is from the property line, and then there's also that added, um, right-of-way from the county road.
From the county road.
I mean, you can kind of see a little bit right here, so that property line's right there, and then plus, you have that right-of-way right there, and then you have.
And those right-of-ways are typically twenty-ish feet?
County road right-of-ways are a little bit larger.
Okay.
Normally than, like, city roads, so. Yeah.
Okay, any other questions for staff?
Not for staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
At this time, I will open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone wishing to speak may come to the podium at this time, stating your name and address for the record.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Uh, my name is Brad Egan, I'm with 814 Services LLC, 1695 Twelve Mile Road, Suite 100, in Berkeley, Michigan. Um, I appreciate Julia's representation of the site plan. Um, we have been, uh, manipulating it a little bit to make it safer, make it better. Um, one of the major things that happened was when the new plat was approved for First State Bank, uh, it differed in where the drive aisle sat and shifted it towards the building more. Um, so, the result of that was, the reason that we had the, it's not up there anymore, but the reason that we had the, uh, the kind of curbed island in the middle was a safety concern, because there seemed to have been kind of like an intersection within the parking lot with traffic coming from the cross-access from the west, from the bank area. There's a cross-access that we're required to build coming, uh, for access to the east. And then, our own two separate parking areas kind of all converged into one space and caused a bit of a, uh, convoluted traffic pattern there. So, the reason that we put the curb up was that we would have people come in one way, go around the curb into angled parking, and then go one way out, and that would alleviate all that congestion in the one area. We thought there'd be significant accidents or the opportunity for. We thought there'd be significant accidents or the opportunity for that if we did not put the curb in. Once the drive aisle was switched and shifted towards our building, it took the need for that curbing away, and I do have a new site plan, which, you know, if you want to take a look at it, you certainly may, but it makes for a much safer, much better circulation, and the curb is out now, so we've, the parking is back to parallel park, not parallel, but perpendicular parking to the building, and there is no curb, there's about five feet behind the parking spaces that abut the building, the front of the building, so that parents, if they need to get in the back of their vehicles, they can without being in danger of standing in the drive aisle, but then they can back out into the drive aisle and then exit the property in that manner. It just alleviates all the questions that were brought up with that curbing with regard to turning radius, with regard to fire safety, not having the, because, understand that when we first developed the site plan, the plan that we got for the bank area, it had a parking field of 125 spaces, I mean, it was gigantic, it took over that whole extra lot. So we thought, okay, that's a lot of traffic coming out for a daycare facility, and as you can imagine, some of you are probably parents yourself with kids in daycare, you know, the drop-off process, the pickup process can be, you know, needed to happen quickly, and we just didn't want that safety concern, so that's how we had proposed initially. Since the drive aisle's been shifted, we no longer have that concern and believe that we have a site plan that takes care of all those concerns and still adheres to all the ordinance. In regards to a couple of the other questions, the landscaping question, I've already got my landscape architect using the plan that we've come up with, that we will get cleared through engineering to meet the code required for landscaping, and then with regard to the 50% masonry on the building, we've already got another elevation. Some municipalities will allow lap siding on the sides above the brick base or the stone base, whichever we put in, but in the instance where it's required to be 50% or more, what we'll do is we'll put typically a stone base and then brick from there to the soffit, and then above in the gables, we'll put the lap siding up there, and then it meets the 50% masonry ordinance that you require. The other items that were in that list of seven, I don't have any issue with making sure that all those are met, and the expansion of the photometric plan is already underway, it's just a matter of expanding it to the property lines, but we don't have any lights in the play area, and we don't have any lights towards the private road to the north. So the light levels that are shown on the existing photometric are basically going to diminish even more as they get towards those property lines.
Okay.
I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. I will have you, I know we had one other question for you in regards to safety, and then we may have you come back up at the end of the public hearing if we have other questions that come up.
Sure.
So there was one question from a commissioner on the safety with the play area being, right abutting.
Yeah, and while we, while that discussion was going on, there is a, there's a typographical survey in here that shows the elevations, and that's what I was looking at, so you're going to have, I didn't have to mention from like, for the county right-of-way, for the road, and then the distance from there to the fence line, but it does look to be well over 30 to 40 feet. Combined, it's probably closer to 50 or 60, if you're talking from the edge of the road to the fence. In addition to that, there's some elevation change there too, probably about five to six feet in elevation change from where the playground would be to, I don't know if it dips down and then comes back up, or if it just dips down to the road, but there is an elevation change there of, it looked like, from what I saw on there, to be about five feet.
Do you, can you speak a little bit, I must have meant you have fencing.
Yes.
Around that play area, can you speak a little bit about that fencing as well?
Typically, we're going to use a vinyl-coated chain-link fence that's black, and we surround the play area with that. It's typically six feet tall, then there's, depending on how the tenant wants us to build it, there's sometimes our interior fencing areas that segregate kind of the different play areas by age, so that you don't have infants playing with four-year-olds, where there could be some mishaps there, and those typical, the fences that separate the areas of the playground, and I don't know if we have any in this instance, but they're typically a foot or two less than the exterior fencing.
The exterior six feet.
The exterior fencing is a safety issue, we don't want people to be able to reach over the fence and pardon it, but take a child out of the play area, that is not authorized to take a child out. The daycare tenants that we represent, they require all parents to park their car, take their child in, and then when they come back to pick them up, they have to go inside, pick them up, bring them out to the car themselves. So safety is definitely an issue that they are very attuned to.
Thank you. Were there other questions on the safety of the fence or anything?
I have a question. With the fence in the play area, looks like it's wrapping around, maybe around the side, the south side and the east side, is that correct?
The majority of the play area is on the south side of the building, there's some, and there's a little bit more than what you saw on that other site plan. Now that the building has shifted a little bit, it's caused us to actually have a little bit more play area to the east. Right now, on the site plan that you saw, it's somewhat unusable, it's more of a, you know, just a walkway to get to the play area. In a typical setting, we would have more usability and more area in that, in the back of the building, so when we shifted for the new site plan, it opened that up a little bit, maybe, you know, eight to 10 feet more.
Okay.
In the back of the building, to the east.
And then, how does egress work then through the fenced area? Where does this, where do they spill out of if, or is there an issue with egress? If they're, you know, if they come out the backside of the building into a fenced area?
There's egress out of every classroom.
Okay.
That goes into the fenced area.
And if there was an emergency, how do they get out of the fenced area?
There's gates, and I don't know if they're shown on the site plan.
The north and the southeast corners? I just want to make sure that they're not spilling out near the road, or?
No, they would, there would probably be a gate on the southwest corner.
Okay.
Towards the dumpster area, and then there would be something to the northeast corner. You know, depending on where a fire occurs, they can always, there's so much egress out of the building that that part of it is kind of the least of.
Okay.
The safety concerns when it comes to a fire.
So there's other egress options outside of the fenced area, then?
There's gates that, that would.
But I mean, there's plenty, if you're in the building, you would not need to exit typically to the fenced area to get out, is what you're saying, there's other, there's plenty of egress within the interior of the building.
Yes, absolutely, yeah.
Okay. With regards to like the landscaping plan, do any of the trees, are they purposeful for like shading in that play area?
No, typically not. Trees within that fenced-in area tend to be more of a hazard than they are help, so we don't put, we don't typically put plantings within that fenced-in area. If it was something on the perimeter, I think it drops off a little bit to the east, and it makes it more difficult for plantings to go in there. We would try and maintain the landscaping within the front and the north, the west and the north side of the building, and in, around those parking areas.
Okay.
But regardless of where the plantings go, we would meet the landscape design requirements.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak on this item, they may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Staying down, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Keniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, public hearing is now closed. Are there any further questions or conversation on this item that anyone has before we should move forward?
I just think it's great to have another daycare center in the city of Rosemount.
Welcome addition.
Yes, it's a welcome addition, and it's a new daycare brand that I don't think we've got many of in the metro, so.
It's going to be a great location right there with all the building and even high-density residential going in, it's going to be perfect.
All that residential, it'll be a great location.
So I can make a movement, but I want to be clear, so condition number five, we're going to change the end of that sentence from prior to city council approval to prior to issuance of permit?
Of building permit, yeah.
Building permit.
And before you make that motion, I just want to confirm, Julia, the new plans with the architectural elevations, the turning radius, all that's going to go, will go back to the engineer and be reviewed, okay? That's what I figured, but, okay.
Yes, I'll make a recommendation to approve a site plan review allowing 814 Services LLC to construct a childcare center, subject to the following conditions numbered 1 through 7, with an amendment to condition 5, which will read applicant will need to verify that lumens on the photometric plan do not exceed .05 at residential property lines prior to issuance of the building permits.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, motion carries. And just for clarification, this item will not move forward to city council, this is the final step on this item this evening and in the future.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, welcome to Rosemount. The next item on our agenda this evening is a public hearing request by Enclave Companies for approval of a rezoning of a subject property from R4 PUD to R3 PUD and a major amendment to the Amber Fields planned unit development to construct 178 townhomes on Lot 1, Block 1 of Amber Fields 8th Edition, 6th Edition, sorry. Anthony?
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is an item that, the public hearing for which was originally opened at the March Planning Commission meeting. Since then, at the April meeting, the Planning Commission has held that public hearing open while the applicant revised some of its plans. Overall, the general plans provided by the applicant, it's still a townhome development, they just reconfigured the site and changed some of the units from side by side to back to back, resulting in an increase in the number of units. I'll go through each of those individually here as well. So as you said, it is a request by Enclave Companies to construct 178-unit townhome development, this is in the north-central portion of Amber Fields. The site is currently zoned R4 PUD, and it's designated for high-density residential development. The rezoning is needed to accommodate the proposed townhomes. Townhomes are not a permitted use in the R4 district, but the comprehensive plan does allow for some limited R3 zoning in those areas. The applicant is requesting three deviations from the zoning ordinance through the PUD process as part of its amendment request. One is to reduce the number of guest parking stalls, to increase the maximum density by .2 units per acre from 12 to 12.2, and then a slight increase to the building height on some of the buildings. I will specify those as well as we go forward, so the commission is aware of which buildings would be a little bit taller than 35 feet, and where those fall in the site, and what sort of impact they may have on adjacent properties. So as I said, the site is located in the north-central portion of Amber Fields, it's this larger parcel here. To the east is Abbey Field Avenue, with a site that is also designated for high-density residential here. West is a stormwater pond, as well as a Met Council lift station here, part of their wastewater management system. And then here is the Collector Street down below, my apologies, I believe it's 151st Street, I can't remember off the, or maybe 146th, but at any rate, this is the parcel here. It had originally been approved for a sort of rental townhome quasi-apartment project with 268 units, so with the proposed 178 units, it is a reduction overall in what was originally approved for this site. That is another reason for the major amendment to the planned unit development. So the rezoning request, you can see on the left, it's zoned R4, high-density residential with the PUD overlay, it would be rezoned to the R3 medium-density residential with the PUD overlay to accommodate the townhome project, or townhome product. When the original development proposal came through in 2022, they were a townhome development in that each unit had an exterior door and a garage, but they were really constructed kind of like mini apartment buildings. These are much more consistent with what we would think of as a townhome. So here's the layout of the site, it's comprised of a mix of side-by-side buildings and back-to-back buildings. There's these side-by-side buildings along the eastern perimeter, then there's some side-by-side units here with walkout basements, and then the back-to-back units are in the north side, abutting County Road 42, as well as located kind of internally to the site, and these are the ones that are slightly taller than 35 feet. They have a hipped roof though, so the, it's not a flat roof extending all the way up to that 38 feet.
Anthony, just to confirm.
Yeah.
All of the back-to-back ones are the higher elevation, the higher height?
Correct.
Okay, so not, doesn't matter if it's six or eight, it's all higher?
They're, all the back-to-back units are the same height. So the main entrance into the site is here with a medianed and landscaped entry drive, there is a secondary entrance to the east, community amenities in the form of pickleball court, pool, and totlot around the clubhouse, as well as a dog, fenced-in dog run area as well. The site does include some sidewalks to provide interior circulation, and they do connect with the Bituminous Trail along 148th Street, just south of the site. As I said, the applicant is requesting a deviation from the parking requirements. Townhome developments, single-family attached dwelling developments require, in addition to two enclosed garage spaces per unit, .5 spaces per unit as guest parking. And the applicant's plan here includes 256 enclosed parking stalls, that's two per unit, and 62 guest parking stalls, that's a ratio of .34 per unit. The code doesn't actually require any surface or driveway parking, but the plans do provide for another 356 parking stalls. So over 4, 4.34 stalls per unit compared to like a two-stall-per-unit standard for high-density residential. I just want to go back to show where those parking stalls, those guest parking stalls are located. They are well-positioned throughout the site with including some parallel on-street parking. The applicant's plans for the clubhouse have shifted slightly, so these five stalls are not accounted for in the final site plan, but the numbers provided to the commission in the staff report are reflective of that change. The applicant provided a robust landscape plan for both the trees as well as shrubbery. There is 172 overstory trees provided by the landscape plan, which is a shortfall of There is 172 overstory trees provided by the landscape plan, which is a shortfall of six. The requirement is one per unit. The plan does provide a much larger amount of foundation plantings than is required by the code. You can see here the required 881, which is one per linear feet of building perimeter, one per 10 linear feet of building perimeter. The applicant has provided over 2200. Additionally, the applicant's landscape plan includes ornamental trees in addition to the overstory trees and foundation plantings. The code specifically calls out overstory trees as a requirement. Therefore, the ornamental trees don't count towards that 178 required, but there are 64 of those. And you can see the trees provided by the applicant shown here. These are the overstory trees, although I do think there might be some ornamentals that would be the smaller ones here, as well as along the north. The foundation plantings provided show significant screening along County Road 42, as well as along the backs of the houses on 148th Street to the south and east, as well as around each of the building's individual units there. And lastly, around the clubhouse with the pool. Here's a zoomed-in plan for the clubhouse area with those five parking stalls removed. The clubhouse is a little bit larger in size. Again, a pickleball court, a swimming pool, and a tot lot, as well as some outdoor tables for lounging and eating. And then here are some building elevations provided by the applicant. These are the side-by-side units that feature a traditional floor plan. These do not have the walkouts, I'll show those next. See a nice mix of materials there, as well as a variation in the color. The walkout ones are very similar, although with a walkout basement off the rear. And again, these are located on the west side, facing that stormwater retention pond and Met Council lift station site. And then the back-to-back units, here's an example of an eight-unit one. The six-unit ones are similar, although they're just a little shorter. You can see consistent materials and colors with that hipped roof reaching up to 37.5 feet. Staff is recommending just a deviation from 35 feet to 38, just so that it's a round number. So, again, here's the overall layout. You can see those back-to-back units located along the north, along County Road 42, as well as centrally to the site. The view from the public rights of way to the south and east are mainly of the side-by-side units, as well as all of the plantings that the landscape plan showed with those walkout units on the left side. And here are some elevations of the clubhouse. Again, a consistent exterior treatment, and then a maintenance building there as well on the left with some consistent roofing materials and siding materials. So, the commission has two recommended actions before them, the first being a motion to rezone the site from R4 PUD to R3 PUD in order to account for the townhouse use. And then also the motion to recommend a major amendment to the Amberfields planned unit development, specifically including those deviations listed there. Again, that would be to reduce the minimum required guest stalls from 89 spaces to 62, or .5 per unit to 3.34 per unit. A deviation to increase the density, maximum density from 12 units per acre to 12.2 units per acre. Again, reminding the commission that this is still much lower than what was originally anticipated with the previous development proposal on this site. And then lastly, the deviation to increase the maximum building height. I will note that in the staff report, under the recommended action, it does have an increase from 35 to 37.5 feet. I would ask the commission to just change that to 38 feet, so it's a round number. And then lastly, conformance with the engineer's memo there. I'm able to take any questions. I know the applicant is presenting, who can maybe speak to this a little bit more, particularly about operational aspects of the site. This is a rental townhome development. It's not unlike other developments we've seen recently. The Garrett Companies with their Echelon project is just east, as well as developments in Lakeville, near Pilot Knob Road and County Road 46, that are also a rental townhome product. So, with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. I just want to provide, I think, one clarification. I may have not heard it, but I think when you were going through the conditions, you missed the tree one, which was the first one, so I just want...
Oh, yep. The condition on the tree is not for a deviation, but it is to update the landscaping plan.
Yes, okay.
I was just gonna ask on that.
Yep, and then I guess three more things. The utilities are served by existing utilities within 148th Street. There is no requirement for parks dedication because that is taken care of through the overall Amberfields development, specifically through that large, wide-open area and the neighborhood parks surrounding that. And then lastly, the applicant did submit a site lighting plan that staff reviewed that met the requirements of the code. Lighting is all located internally and at the property lines for the site. It is well below the maximum allowed by the code. So, sorry.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff at this time?
I think you answered my question, because I remember when there was going to be some rental-type properties originally proposed, so you answered the question. So, these are rental townhomes not owned?
Correct.
And are they market rate or?
I believe they're market rate. I would defer to the applicant, but my understanding is that they are market rate.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The building heights, that would be above 37 and a half feet, is that all the, or 38 feet, is that all the units? Is there anything special about the 35 that, why there's a cap on it currently?
So, the 35, it's just the zoning code's maximum height. It's actually the maximum height for R1 low-density residential, so single-family homes have a 35-foot maximum building height as well. So, that's just what the code has for a cap. I also would note that that is measured as the average between the peak and the eve. So, the tip of the building is a little higher, but it's the average of that height there.
Okay.
And I think you were asking if it's all buildings, it's only the ones that are six or eight back-to-backs?
Correct.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so it would have to be consistent with this development plan that's approved. So, you know, they would have to apply for an amendment if they wanted to change that, but staff was generally supportive of that due to the fact that the buildings that are slightly taller than 35 feet are all located internally. And given that the site is already currently planned or zoned for high-density residential, which has a 40-foot, 48-foot maximum building height, it's still kind of lower than what we were anticipating along County Road 42.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Thank you, Anthony. At this time, we open up the public hearing for this item. Anyone would like to speak on this item tonight may do so at this time coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name's Brian Bachman. I am from West Fargo, North Dakota. I am with the enclave companies. This is the first time in my career of doing this, I'm actually asking for a lower density. So, this is a first for me. Welcome to Rosemont. So, a little bit about us, we are, like I said, we are originally based out of Fargo. We also have an office now in St. Louis Park. We came into the Twin Cities Market in 2019, and we have 21 projects in town now. So, we've been very active in going around the communities. One of the things I think that is a little bit different about us too is that we are our own development company, we are our own construction company, we are our own management company, and we are the long-term owners of our properties. We don't sell properties, which is why the way we set this up is our plat is one lot, because our goal was never to sell off units and do all of that stuff. So, when I have two maddeningly young partners that will see the end of these 30-year mortgages, I don't have that lofty aspiration. But we do plan and build and manage all of our projects looking at a 30-year window, not a three-year window. So, one of the reasons you see that, like, we're asking for a variance on parking, but we're actually total parking within the neighborhood, we're massively exceeding it. The simple reason for that is people don't like to rent places where they can't park, right? If you have to park three blocks away from your apartment, your townhome, whatever it is, you're probably not renewing the lease. So, the way we have it set up is all of them have double garages, and they all have the ability to park two more cars in their driveway. And then we have the 62 parking spots kind of positioned around as well. So, we wanted to make sure that we're adequately parked. We do have onsite management that will be there all the time. We have onsite maintenance. We've started doing these townhome developments in several areas. Just feel it's kind of fitting a new niche that's in the marketplace. And when we looked at this site, we really liked Rosemont. We've looked here for a couple of different sites, and this one we looked at, and with the apartments that were out there, we were like, okay, how do we fill that area with something completely different? And Garrett Companies are doing a more Springs-like project, where, as you said, they have the appearance of being more of a townhome, but they really live more like in an apartment building. We literally wanted these to be more like, nope, these are row homes. And so, we've got a nice mix of two-bedroom units and three-bedroom units and four-bedroom units. We tried to mix it up so that we've got a lot of different unit types, so that we've got the ability to serve a lot of different needs. Really excited about the project. Happy to answer any questions anybody has. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant at this time?
I think that my question was, is it gonna be market rate?
Yes, yep.
Because I'm always asked that all the time, when people...
It is, because when people, it's really hard to tell sometimes driving past buildings whether they have some affordability, all affordability, senior affordability, you know, there's really just a lot of different uses out there now.
Any other questions for the applicant at this time? Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else in the audience would like to speak on this item, they may do so at this time coming to the podium stating your name and address for the record. Seeing that, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Bugai. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Public hearing is now closed. Any other questions or comments for staff?
I didn't have a very thorough presentation. Appreciate it. You answered all my questions during the presentation. Glad actually to see you had a little bit of a slower density. Be putting a lot on that quadrant, so I think this is a good change.
I just think it's a great product to bring to the community. Something we don't have, so I'm excited to bring it here. And I appreciate the parking, because at first, when I read it, I will say, oh, they're asking for parking deviation. We don't like to do that. Then I read, I'm like, oh, you have two stalls in the driveway, like, we're fine. We got plenty of parking. So, with that, we can entertain, we've got two motions before us. We will do them separately, and we can move forward. I will just remind, on the second motion is where we need to call out the deviation change to 38 feet.
Okay. I recommend a motion to, recommend the city council approve an amendment to the Rosemont zoning map to change the zoning district of Lot One, Block One, Amberfield Sixth Edition from R4 PUD, high-density residential planned unit development to R3 PUD, medium-density planned unit development.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Bednar. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries.
An a motion to recommend the city council approve a major amendment to the Amberfields planned unit development to allow enclave companies to construct 178 townhomes and a community building on Lot One, Block One, Amberfield Sixth Edition, subject to the following one through five, and number four, from 35 feet to 38 feet.
Second.
It has been moved by Commissioner Rivera, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed. Motion carries. This item will move forward to the city council meeting on June 18th.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome to Rosemont. Okay. We are gonna, Julia, I'm gonna stop you really fast. I've been asked to take a five-minute recess, and then we will reconvene at 8:19.
All right.
I'm meeting, huh?
What?
I'm meeting, huh? Oh, just you wait.
Bathroom's behind there, if anyone needs to use the bathroom. We have a request by Maplewood Development for rezoning and preliminary and final plat approval for Amberfields Eighteenth Edition to create sixty-six single-family lots.
All right. So a little bit of a summary of the request. So the planning commission is being asked to consider requests by Maplewood Development for the following approvals for the Eighteenth Edition, which is the rezoning of the site from P I P U D, Public Institutional Plan Unit Development, to R one P U D, Low Density Residential Plan Unit Development, and then preliminary and final plats. The applicant is requesting the above approvals to create sixty-six, um, single-family lots within the Amberfields Development Area. So a little bit of an overview, overview of the site location. So you can see that, um, this, uh, site is located east of Akron Avenue, um, and then also west of that recently approved Amberfields Fifteenth Edition Preliminary Plat Area. So this land is, um, directly south of city-owned land to the north, which that will be where there's pickleball courts and a dog park area in the future. And then also, uh, Butts University Minnesota Land to the south. And then the remaining Amberfields Development Area, uh, west of Akron Avenue. Uh, so a little overview on the rezoning. So this was the original zoning map, uh, map exhibit. So some things have changed, but you can see, um, the area, um, for the Eighteenth Editions outlined in red. Um, so Amberfields Development Area is designated for mixed-use residential land uses. Uh, the proposed Eighteenth Edition is currently zoned P I, Public Institutional Planning Development. So originally, the site was, um, intended to be reserved for a school site. So that's why that zoning of P I. Um, but after discussions with the applicant, um, they did indicate that the school district was looking for more land than what was available here. So that's why they are requesting that rezone to R one P U D to allow for residential development instead of that school site. So the overall site plan, so the area is eighteen point two-four acres in size. So, um, they are requesting to do sixty-six lots on this area. So there are two main accesses into the site. So I know it's kind of confusing, but Akron Avenue is on this, on the bottom end of here. Um, so shown into, there's two streets that, um, that intersect east from Akron Avenue called Adamstown Drive and Astor Boulevard. These two roads will extend west and will connect this Eighteenth, um, area to the Fifteenth, uh, Edition Preliminary Plat Area as well. So it'll all extend west off, or, excuse me, east off of Akron Avenue. Uh, there are also two additional connection roads within, um, the central area of the site that do connect north and south to those two connection roads off Akron Avenue and then east off that road to, um, connect to the Fifteenth Edition as well. There is also one outlot shown in the southern portion of the plat area, uh, which abuts up to University of Minnesota Land. Um, so it is indicated that this will be built, built out in one phase, um, as well as the two internal roads that connect to the central, um, lots as well. Uh, so here the lot standards, so it's pretty similar to what we've seen, uh, with other additions, um, fifty and sixty-foot wide lots, twenty-five foots front yard setback, and then, um, standard side yard and rear yard setbacks from other additions that we've been seeing for single-family lots within the Amberfields Development Area. And then utility plans, uh, the site will be served by sanitary water and sewer located within Akron Avenue. Stormwater will be managed on-site, which differs from previous additions, which is located, located west of Akron Avenue. Sydney's engineer has provided a memo containing comments related to those plans and then conformance with all the requirements stated in that memo will be included as a condition of approval. And then the landscape plan, so seventy-six trees are, uh, proposed to be planted throughout the site, which does meet that minimum requirement. And then a landscape surety in the amount of twenty-five thousand eighty dollars is required as a condition of approval as well with that. And then shown is the final plat. Like I had mentioned, um, they are, um, planning to build this out in one phase, so all sixty-six lots will be included with this Amberfields, um, Eighteenth Edition Final Plat. And then there's two recommended actions in front of the commission today, one being a motion to recommend the city council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from P I P U D to R one, uh, P U D. And then also a motion to recommend the city council, uh, approve the Amberfields Eighteenth Edition Preliminary and Final Plats, subject to conditions A through E. Um, I can answer any questions that the commission may have, or I do know the applicant is present as well.
Thank you, Julia. I just have one clarification for anyone that might be listening here or at home. The school is not going to go here, but there's, the school district is still working on acquiring some land, we believe, for a school, correct?
For a middle school, correct? Um, that elementary school off of Bon Air and Akron, that was already.
That was the replacement for this one?
I believe so. I knew, know the school district is still looking to acquire land for the proposed middle school, but, um, the school district, to my knowledge, from what the applicant, um, has said, that they needed more land than what was available on this site.
On this site. Yeah. It's a hot button of, of schools in our community.
Yeah, it'd be interesting. I was gonna, I was gonna ask, maybe we bring that up in the discussion section, because there's so much going in here in the high school, which I'm most familiar with, is, you know, bursting at the seams currently. I'm curious, maybe in the discussion section, we can talk about that a little bit. Um, the other question I had is about the greenway. So the greenway goes right down here, but, uh, is, do we, is there an easement for that? I mean, the, the, the memo said the developer should work with, uh, the, but I, I'm curious, is there an easement? Where is this gonna go? Or is, should we, should be more teeth in this plan to say, this is where it's gonna go, we're planning for it?
Um.
So I can speak to that, Commissioner. The, the, um, county is working on extending the Vermillion Highlands Greenway, and at this point, it's looking like it will go meander through the Dakota County Technical College land before, um, shifting along Akron Avenue for that segment, um, along there. And that would be, uh, right-of-way easement from, for a trail along the highway, or along the, the road, Akron Avenue.
So is there, is there an easement that's built into the plans currently that will meet the needs for the, the greenway?
Yeah, it would be within the existing right-of-way.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff at this time? Okay. Thank you, Julia. At this time, this item is a public hearing item. We will open the public hearing. Anyone in the audience would like to speak, may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. No? Seeing that, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kinniger, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. So I don't know if anyone has any other further comments or questions on it. It seems pretty, pretty straightforward to me. It's a continuation of what's, what's right next to it and, um, a good use of that land if we're not gonna have a school there. Anybody else have any questions?
I agree. Yeah, yeah, fits, fits right in there. Thank you.
I don't see any concerns.
Do you want to make a motion?
Sure. I'll motion to recommend the city council approve a zoning map amendment to rezone the site from P I P U D, Public Institutional Plan Unit Development, to R one P U D, Low Density Residential Planned Unit Development.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bednar, seconded by Commissioner Reed. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. And we've got one more.
I'll make motion to recommend the city council approve the Amberfields Eighteenth Edition Preliminary Plat and Final Plat, subject to conditions A through E.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Bednar, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed. Motion carries. This item will move forward to city council on June eighteenth. And our last item this evening is a zoning code update and a zoning map, and that is Anthony.
Um, yes, Madam Chair. We do have, uh, Representative Jeff Miller from H J G I, who should be, um, pretty familiar with by now, who has prepared a zoning map presentation to kind of go over what is before the commission this evening.
Thanks, Anthony.
Welcome.
Good evening.
Welcome back.
Um, all right. As you know, on March eighteenth, I believe, you recommended approval, or, uh, recommended to the city council to adopt the code amendments. And at that point, uh, it was still under discussion on how the map was gonna work. So tonight, we're gonna go over the map and the changes to that. Uh, so really quickly, I'll do a overview of the proposed amendments to the zoning districts as part of the code update. And then I'll go into the zoning map amendments. And then there's the public hearing and the discussion and the recommendation.
Jeff, can I have you just speak towards the mic a little bit more or something?
Is that better?
That's better, a little better. Anyone else?
It's soft.
It's soft still?
Oh, that's better.
That's better? Okay.
Just be close to it, I guess.
There we go. Okay. So zoning districts. The changes to the zoning districts are consolidating the twenty-one districts today to fourteen proposed districts, creating a new mixed-use district, the MX two, uh, consistent naming of the districts, so just basically renaming some districts, uh, and then creating more flexible and simplified uses and standards for the districts, which includes the use of tables in the code. So that's, um, is part of the, uh, code amendments that you recommended in March. So really quickly, uh, the, for the residential districts, the only changes, as you can see in this table, are the RL District is being eliminated. It's not been applied on the zoning map anywhere, so it's not needed, so that will go away. And then the R one A District is being eliminated, uh, or I shouldn't say, it's eliminated, but those, that, uh, those parcels are being consolidated into the R one District. So the rezoning involves R one A parcels going to R one. That's it for residential. Um, just as a reminder, the consolidation of R one A and R one, um, is pretty straightforward. Uh, the only, um, I guess qualification with that is in the R one District, there will be an exception for lots plotted before nineteen seventy-nine, which is all those R one A lots. And, uh, they will have a little bit different side yard setbacks than, um, the regular R one parcels. Um, and although it was discussed, it was decided that two-unit dwellings are not allowed in R one at this point. Um, and just along the residential districts, the R one and the R two are, will have decreased lot areas. The R one will be eighty-five hundred square feet, the R two seventy-five hundred square feet for a single-unit dwelling. Um, that's based on market trends. The P U Ds have been approved recently, density requirements in the comp plan. The mixed-use and commercial districts, the changes are, um, the downtown districts being renamed to downtown mixed-use. So MX one, C three, C four are being consolidated into the MX two. And then C, some C four parcels and C one are being consolidated into B one. Uh, the BP or Business Park District is just being renamed. And as far as the MX two, the, the application of that is for the four nodes along Highway forty-two, as developed in the, uh, Highway forty-two development vision. And the regulations in that, that district are, um, we worked on this to ensure that these nodes do not become primarily residential. They should be focused on commercial, but allow residential. And so there's language in that district, um, as shown on the screen, about how to control that mix. The industrial districts, uh, the changes are consolidation of the three, three of the industrial districts into I one, and then two, the bottom two into I two. And then these are just renaming or recoding. So that's the district changes, and those are all approved or recommended, um, by you for, um, adoption by the council in March. So the map, uh, so the map involves renaming some districts, so they will, they are, it's a rezoning, but it's not a change in the district, it's just a change in the name. Um, and then there is some rezoning, and the rezoning involves consolidation of districts, um, a little bit of consolidation of the downtown zoning, so I'll go over this on the maps, so that makes sense. And then aligning with the comp plan and the Highway forty-two development vision. So we have the current zoning map, which has the twenty-one districts. And we have the comp plan map, the future land use map. Um, as a reminder, there's no change to the comp plan or this map. So any changes that are being, uh, proposed on the zoning district, or on the zoning map, are intended to be aligned with the land use map in the comp plan today. So this is the proposed zoning map, which has the fourteen districts instead of the This map is showing the changes that are happening. So these are the, these are the properties that are having a change on the zoning map. So I'll go through these quickly on the following slides. But the summary in the legend shows what's, what the current zoning is and what the new zoning is. So this map shows the current zoning on these parcels, and then this shows the proposed zoning on those same parcels. So we can go back to those if you have questions. But I think when we were working through this in March, the commission was very interested in seeing the map and knowing, you know, which prop, which parcels were being impacted by the proposed changes. So the consolidation of the districts involves the R one District, as I said earlier, and that's simply bringing the R one A parcels into the R one District. The, the, there's a new B one District, which I had up on the screen earlier, that's consolidating C one and C four, the C one and C four districts. And there's one business park parcel that's coming into that district, that's being rezoned to B one. Uh, for the I, I one District, that's the consolidation of three districts there. And then on the map, the I two District is a consolidation of those two districts. So it's, I, you know, I'm, kind of feels like I'm going over it in two different ways, but I just want to make sure, if you have questions, you can ask those questions. So the R one District, R one A is rezoned to R one. One, R one A is being rezoned to MX one. I can point that out if you want to on the map. You can see for B one, it's primarily rezoning C, anything that's C four to B one. There's only two C one properties being rezoned to B one, and then one business park property. For the I one, it's primarily the GI, the G, uh, general industrial parcels being rezoned to I one. And then you can see there's one, um, industrial park property going to I one and two, two light industrial going to I one. And then lastly, the I two District is basically bringing the waste management parcels into the same district with heavy industrial. Anything, any uses proposed for waste, composting, and recycling uses would still continue to require an interim use permit within the I two District. And then the downtown district's just being renamed to MX one, so no, no changes to the, really to the standards there, it's just a renaming. There is, as you can see, eight parcels that are being consolidated or rezoned into MX one, and I can show you those on the map. And then the four nodes are being rezoned to MX two. So, um, can quickly go back to the map if there's questions, but if you can see my cursor, anything in yellow over here is the R one proper, R, I'm sorry, R one A properties that will now be rezoned to R one. Um, all the red ones are being rezoned from a commercial district, basically, a C one or C four to B one. You can see the orange, those are the four nodes going to MX two. If I zoomed into this map in the downtown area, you'd see there's eight properties that are proposed for rezoning to MX one, which is the downtown zoning district. And then the rest is basically the, um, the industrial districts being consolidated.
Jeff, can you point out, there was one business park property that was rezoned as part of, of course, I didn't write it down.
Yes.
Do you know which one I'm talking about?
Scarily, I do.
Okay. Can you point out where that property is?
And Anthony can help me out, but it's this one right down here, I believe, which is the.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
The dual zoning.
They've got the dual zoning currently because they proposed that.
Restaurant.
Restaurant.
Restaurant. Okay, thank you. Okay. And then you said, there was eight parcels that went to MX one, but on a slide a couple before that, there was one parcel that went to MX one from, I want to say, a residential district. A parcel was that.
Yes. Um, I don't think I can zoom into this, right? I believe it's the, uh, it's, it's up here, so it was, and I believe.
Was it that single-family home?
It's the, is it the brick house there on?
Yeah, I think it's.
Block east, a block west of, uh, three, right by the Stiefel Center?
Yeah, it's one of those. It's either that one or there's a, there's another just kind of standalone house, um, just north of, I think it's a dentist, right along that street, though.
I think you're talking about the same spot.
So, I mean, the intent was to look at the downtown area and just bring them into that mixed-use downtown district, if it made sense.
Yeah. Jeff, maybe if I can jump in and, um, Chair Kinniger. You know, as a part of this, um, I, I want to acknowledge that we have three new commissioners tonight that, um, hadn't taken a part of the. that hadn't taken a part of the year and a half-plus process that have led us up to this. So I don't want this to be maybe anticlimactic, but at the same time, this is kind of the very detailed piece in the final stage as we move towards a recommendation for final adoption. And for the commissioners that have been with us throughout this process, a lot of this is actually, that Jeff's going through tonight, is redundant of the code update that we considered back in March. And the reason that we're bringing this forward here tonight is because this actually touches the map, received guidance to make sure that we're having a public hearing that's specific to the map, to the code, and then we're going to bring these all together for an additional, not required public hearing, but for an additional public hearing on June 4th through the city council to consider the totality of all of these recommended and proposed changes. So there's a lot of stuff here. I don't want to maybe underplay it, as Jeff's kind of going through some of the changes and the different colors here. But the bulk of this has been iterative and evolutionary throughout that entire year and a half, leading up into what translates into colors and new designations on the map here.
So, like, with one of the, we said one house was becoming mixed-use, is that right? In this process?
It's being rezoned to the downtown district.
Is it the brick house by the library that was scheduled to be torn down?
Torn down, yeah.
Okay.
I don't know, I'm asking.
I think that's the one we're talking about. Is it?
I believe it's this...
Because didn't they want to do apartments there and...
They wanted to tear it down, and then it's still there, so I don't know.
Anthony, do you remember that?
I think it, so, yes, there was an approved project for that site. But immediately south of there is another single-family home that I think is...
In between, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, it's like a little bungalow.
So does that house now have, like, optionality where they could use it for different uses than a house?
Correct. Yep, yep. They can, well, they can continue using it, as is, but then they could also use it consistent with the downtown zoning district as well.
Okay.
Yeah, so it could be used for non-residential.
Do you have other stuff or more, are you ready for more questions?
I don't, I just, all I have is the next steps, or to incorporate any updates from the commission or the public hearing. And then, as Adam said, it goes to the council on the 4th, is the current schedule.
My only question is, I'm looking at the map that was provided here. On the far west-hand end of town, and you can see it here on this one that you've got, you've got the light blue and the purple, which looks to me to be industrial in the middle of the residential.
Correct. Yeah, so that was zoned industrial park.
Yeah, okay.
It's a wood shop, and it's the only parcel in the city zoned IP. So it's getting rezoned to I1 now. And that's part of that consolidation and cleanup.
Oh, I thought that was zoned something else here on the original IC. Okay, I just couldn't read the first one.
There's a lot of tiny details.
There's a lot of...
It's more the anecdotal reference that we're like, oh, yeah, so we're familiar with that parcel.
So, perfect.
Jeff, can you speak a little bit, or maybe staff can speak to these? It kind of starts just west of Clayton Avenue there, and then there's a couple of them to the east that are darker green. And so I'm thinking that they're egg preserve, but they used to be zoned agriculture on the old map. Why are those, why are we changing the zoning?
Down in this area?
Yeah, that, and then there's one just...
Right there.
Yep.
Those are, A1 is egg preserve. So they're in the egg preserve program.
Okay, so maybe this map just doesn't, this old map, the current zoning, doesn't show them as egg preserve.
Right, that was a, I don't understand what the situation was there, why those were not called out. I think it had to do with our GIS department and the colors being so similar. But there are some specific egg preserve parcels out there, and those are actually shown on the proposed map.
Okay.
The egg preserve district existed in the code. It just wasn't showing up in the map.
Yeah, I knew it was there, I just didn't realize that, that those, for some reason, I was thinking the egg preserve was elsewhere. Okay.
And maybe just to clarify too, egg preserve is a opt-in, more of a tax designation that property owners can previously, and what we're moving away from is having it as a standalone zoning district within our zoning map, and just understanding that that's more up to the property owner, how do they utilize the program, and it doesn't need to be reflected in our zoning map.
So if they are currently zoned as A2, they, could they apply for egg preserve?
If they meet the minimum size, I think it's 40 acres, is what the program requires.
They could apply for it, and then would we need to change their zoning?
I think we would want to.
Okay, okay, thank you. Any other questions from the commission?
I think I had originally brought it up one other time. I'm not sure if this legend on the new one is complete yet, but for the normal person that's not familiar with all the acronyms, is it going to be spelled out more?
I mean, yeah, we can do whatever we want with the legend.
Okay. This legend is really helpful.
Yeah.
On the old map, where it says R1 Rule Resident, or R Rule Residential.
Some people don't know what all these letters mean.
Yep.
Yep, I'll maybe give you a little, sorry, behind-the-scenes piece on that. So Jeff's firm has derived this map, showing these colors to represent the project as they brought it forward to us. They're already working with our internal GIS department so that if the council chooses to adopt their motions on June 4th, we'll have those updated to be more in line with how we currently portray our maps.
Okay, will we, so like, R1 is still R1. We put R1A into R1, but will we continue with the colors then for the districts that continued?
I would defer to our GIS folks and what the best practices are on that.
To be clear, so it would be spelled out prior to the public hearing, so it'd be easier to read for people?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Any other comments or questions?
No. How are we notifying people who are under a property that is going through a change?
Do you want to talk about that piece, Anthony, because I know we chatted on...
Yeah, we spoke with the city's attorney on this, just because there are significant amount of properties on here. They, the city's attorney said we didn't have to send out letters, but from a staff standpoint and administrative standpoint, we've been pushing this out to the community, both through social media and the city's website, also through our newsletter that's gone out. And then we've also been sharing it at public events and community things like that. So, but the, at the end of the day, people's use of their property will remain largely unchanged, because the whole purpose of the project was to basically make it, the zoning code is a tool for staff and for developers to know what they can do on the site. And it's really to make it clearer and more easy to use. But at, like I said, at the end of the day, people's use of their property remains largely unchanged.
There was nothing, if I recall, there was nothing as more restrictive in particular, which was a concern.
No, it makes, in fact, you know, the big thing that maybe would impact most property owners is that the, like, the side yard setback is changing from 10 feet to seven and a half feet, which gives people more flexibility.
That doesn't really change with our zoning piece. That was with our ordinances for just the R1, right? Like, if you're an existing R1 house, that applies to you now.
Right.
Or once it passes.
Right, exactly.
Right.
So, part of our job as planners, too, is education, and we do get calls, and people reach out to us daily about what, if they have questions about what they can do, if they have a project in mind. And it's really there that we're able to have that kind of quality discussion about what limitations there are or not for what they want to do.
And we didn't take any property and change it through here to be like R3, R4, higher density, when it was R1.
Right, the residential properties are generally staying, the residential zoning districts are generally all staying the same, with the exception that R1A is now being called R1, and that the parcels that are platted prior to 1979 have those R1A setback standards. Nothing went from residential to commercial. Nothing's going from, you know...
There's no commercial business that's being rezoned that would cause us not to be able to operate.
Right, right, because it's all consistent with the comprehensive plan, which is really what is our guide, more than the zoning ordinance.
Just kind of go back to the communication plan for a second. First of all, I did like the website and the links in here. Appreciate it, appreciate the fact that you embedded the planning commission discussion, because we got on a lot of these detailed questions. For the public hearing, is there any additional, out of the norm, any additional communication about this to the residents? Newsletter, or just is it?
Well, we had the newsletter, you know, which is put out quarterly, and it was a pretty, pretty good article as far as like length and depth. I'm assuming, you know, the city administrator, Martin, will touch on this when he talks about what's going on at upcoming meetings on social media.
And the other piece, too, is that, because we certainly appreciate that this is a wholesale change, and while we, we're just always cautious how we frame it, because nothing is changing under the guise of the comp plan. So while it is a lot of technical change, a lot of technical consolidation, a lot of amendment, the impact to the property owners of the residents would be negligible at best. But we also want to acknowledge that there are things that are changing, especially when people, if they are practitioners and want to dive into it, things have changed. So the public hearings that we have coming up on June 4th aren't required, but we're choosing, and the city council is choosing, to hold those additional public hearings as a part of this process, to make sure that people do have a chance to provide input if and when they choose to do so. Not just, well, we met our minimum requirements and then we can go forward. It's, we've met the minimums, and then we've done additional notifications and hearings on top of that to make sure that people who do have an ability or an interest in commenting have that opportunity.
Any other comments or questions for Jeff or for staff? Seeing none, I will open up the public hearing for this item this evening. This item is a public hearing tonight as well. If anyone is in the audience that would like to speak on this item, they may do so at this time, coming to the podium, stating your name and address for the record. Seeing no one but Jeff in our audience, I will make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Kenninger, seconded by Commissioner Reed to close the public hearing. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, public hearing is now closed. So we had public hearing tonight as part of it, and then there'll be another one June 4th. So anyone listening that missed tonight's public hearing, you have another opportunity, June 4th, at the city council meeting. And information can be found on the city's website for that, or by calling City Hall. And so with that, we've got a motion in front of us this evening for this item. Anyone like to make a motion?
Make a recommendation to hold a public hearing and make a motion to recommend the city council adopt the proposed zoning map.
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Reed, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. That concludes our public hearing section of tonight's meeting. Do we have any new business?
We do not.
Okay, do we have any discussion items this evening from staff?
Staff has done.
Okay, Commissioner Reed, would you have a discussion item you'd like to bring up?
I am curious with, you know, the motion today approved to rezone that spots, that lots, Amber Fields, away from public institutional. If you have any updates from the school district about high school or other lots, or anything you can share on that?
We do work closely with the school district. We do also want to be very transparent in that they do their own site planning, and they have their own demographer and projections. We do work closely with them to help them make sure that those numbers are truthed with building permit activity, housing development, and everything else. But the district is very independent, this is for the public largely watching this, very independent of the city in terms of planning where schools are located, improvements that are done. We could probably speak a little bit more to it, but I largely would have to defer to the school district and, you know, their own developments and expansions and plans for the program. You know what is very well-known is that we recently, within 196, approved the largest voter referendum in state history for, I think it's just shy of $500 million, for school and facility improvements, which include a new middle school in Rosemount, additional school and improvements all throughout Rosemount, as well as within the remainder of the 196 district. I don't know if that really gets kind of at your question, Commissioner Reed, but, you know, maybe the more direct answer is we do work closely with them, but at the end of the day, the school district is the one out there planning, citing, and working through their facility improvements.
That makes sense, thank you.
Any other comments or questions or discussion items? Okay, with none, I will adjourn the meeting, meeting adjourned.